6:37 and I'd like to call this meeting of the Lunenburg School Committee to order. Our first order of business is the Pledge of Allegiance, so please stand if you are able.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We had discussed previously that we would move public comments to the very, very beginning of the meeting, particularly when we have an executive session. So even though it is not that way on this current agenda, is there anyone with a public comment? Is there a public comment on the board? Okay then, I guess we don't have to worry about that. The Chair's report is next. On Thursday, October 12th, the Superintendent presented our warrant article for special town meeting that will be held on November 14th. This article was to fund the first phase of mini splits for the climate control at primary school. This was approved by the Finance Committee four to one. We held a joint meeting with the Lunenburg Municipal Design Committee on Monday, October 16th. There was much discussion about how the rehabilitation and/or replacement of Turkey Hill Elementary School fits into the Municipal Design Committee's plan. We did agree that phases one and two of the plan involving the Ritter Building and Town Hall should get underway as soon as possible and that we will continue our dialogue regarding Turkey Hill Elementary. The Superintendent, Mr. Hevy and I met with Green Communities last evening. It appears the path for possible funding for school projects goes through the execution of an energy building audit. We will be looking into this. I had supposed to say that on a lightning note, homecoming is scheduled for Saturday, October 21st. However, it has been moved to October 28th and the Superintendent will talk more about that. And that's my Chair's report. And now, I need a motion to go into executive session to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or to conduct collective bargaining sessions or contract negotiations with non-union personnel.
So moved.
All those in favor?
Aye.
So we will adjourn to executive session and we will return hopefully fairly soon.
What's the theme for homecoming this year?
I think if bonus points, if it comes out to the volume.
Yeah.
We'll have to listen to the music coming from the clubs and see if we hear any bizarre homes. Well, now I can come. I'm excited.
It's gonna be cool to be there for this. This is nerve wracking. I don't know what I do. I wonder what I could do for this.
I was so happy I wasn't real last week when she asked for volunteer. I'm like, nope.
It's fun. You just sit down and talk to him.
Yeah, but my eight-year-old said, you're gonna look terrible in there.
Oh, that's so mean.
Other, I have two boys. They're always sweet. It's hilarious.
Alrighty. We are back and um.
Alrighty, we are back and I wish to thank people for hanging out. That took a little longer than we had anticipated. And I did say that I would allow for public comment once again because that is where it is on the agenda. So is there any future public comment?
I actually just have one thing that I'd like to bring. I think it'd be remiss. Particularly given the 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 efforts that we put in over the course of the last year around social emotional learning. Not to acknowledge what's happening in the world right now and. You know, not just the violence of the last week, but really the violence of the last year and a half. And, you know, I've been a news junkie since I was in grade school and I don't have any insights that you can't find someplace else about cause or. How you fix any of this. But there are a lot of people in Lunenburg and our surrounding communities that. Work with or have immediate family. In the affected areas, I I work with people in the affected areas. And, you know, by extension, a lot of our kids. Know people or, you know, are are parented by people who know people. And this affects things and. I was listening to a podcast yesterday and there was a. A really insightful comment. It said, hurt people, hurt people. And I believe that to be true. And there's a lot of hurt going on right now. And I think it's an opportunity. To harness some of this and and. Teach that. Teach the level of empathy. Or or show examples of empathy to our kids right now and make sure that they understand. As best we as best they can at the levels and the ages that they're at. To understand that and that this stuff doesn't come out of nowhere. And and. We need to, we need to treat people right. And it starts here.
Thank you, Mr. Beardmore. Okay, seeing no other comments. Then we will continue. Review and approve minutes, regular session, September twentieth. I had two small things that needed changing, which I believe have been changed. Did anyone? Have any other questions about those minutes? All right, then do we have a motion to approve the minutes of September twentieth?
I missed that one.
You can't make a motion then.
Motion to approve.
And a second? All right, then all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye abstain? Alrighty. So that's taken care of. We have. To. Approve the warrants. And then there is a line item transfer on the. In the drive. So. First is everyone had a chance to look at if they wish to the warrants that have been signed up through the sixth of October. And there are no questions about those warrants. All right. Then we'll. Move on. Do we vote on those? I don't think so. I don't think we decided that because because I have a signature. Okay. But we do have a line item transfer.
So Mr. Cassidy is not with us. Mr. Cassidy is not with us this evening, but you have his color coding. On the line item transfer, essentially, he's making these transfers in anticipation of. Settling the. Contract negotiations with both the CAF workers and the custodians.
Okay, does anybody have any questions regarding that transfer? Mr. Beardmore, you have a quizzical look about you.
Yeah, I'm. And I'd be happy to follow the recommendation of the superintendent. I'm just wondering the the logic of approving the transfer. Before the contracts are approved.
We can pass over it and bring it back to the next meeting. Does that affect anything?
It shouldn't.
By now, I wouldn't think.
We have to approve the contracts before any money gets.
Before any money gets spent, so.
Gets spent. I I just. Personally, it just. It seems to me that that's the order that we should move in. And I understand that we have a verbal agreement, but. I I feel as if we. We should approve the. The agreements before we move the money.
My only question would be, is. Mr. Cassidy able to set all of that up without our approval?
I don't know.
As timing may be of an essence. Is my only question with that. I don't know the answer to that either.
You mean make a motion. From the contract? I think it's okay to hold it until.
You think it's all right first. Okay, all right, we'll do that then. We will pass over. I guess we have to have a vote. Do I have a motion?
Motion to table the wire. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Then we are on to the superintendent's report.
All right, so as Mrs. Ashamo has already. Referenced homecoming. Which was scheduled for this Saturday. Has been moved. To Saturday, October twenty eighth. And that's based on the forecast for inclement weather for the entirety of this upcoming weekend. The concern on on Sunday being more so related to wind than than to torrential rain. So the parade will leave Turkey Hill Elementary at noon. On Saturday, the twenty eighth, and the football game will follow at one P M. And the musicators will be operating the snack shack. Regarding the MCAS twenty twenty three results. Both the MCAS and I Ready student score reports were delivered to the Wunnerberg Post Office on Monday. Parents were also notified by email. And again, I just want to make folks aware that the ways in which the mail is now being processed. It's it's sometimes upwards of ten. Maybe fourteen days before. Mail arrives at home. So not to be alarmed if if you don't have your students' results just yet. Want to provide some updates on some key district positions. Eric Hebe, our new director of facilities and grounds, will begin his employment with us on Monday. We're working to coordinate a meet and greet opportunity that. We're working on tentatively. For six P M., which would be just prior to our. School committee meeting on November first. Once the plans are finalized, we'll send out a district wide message notifying both staff and families. That they're welcome to come and meet Mr. Hebe, but we'll also make sure that we send out invitations to various town departments and boards, commissions, etc. As well as the. Youth organizations because they do interface with our district facilities. Deirdre McLean, our Title One Coordinator and Literacy Specialist, has resigned her position. I wish to publicly thank her for all her efforts here in the district to strengthen literacy instruction. And to use assessment data to target student needs. Deirdre was a dynamic, dedicated and knowledgeable leader, and she will be sorely missed. We have posted the position and we will be looking to fill it with someone who can bring their knowledge and talent. To continue the work that Deirdre has been leading for us, and we wish Deirdre all the best.
Lastly, regarding the position, I am sad to announce that my capacity. Our Director of Finance and Human Resources has accepted a position in another district. Which he will assume after the Thanksgiving. These are enormous changes to go. And this will be a significant loss for the district, but we wish my our best in this new endeavor. Somewhat relating to this announcement. I have put a freeze on the current year budget, the FY twenty four budget. Watching out for an abundance of caution until we navigate the transition to a new finance director. And you can be as far as where we are. A few upcoming dates to remind you. Thursday, October nineteenth, tomorrow evening, we have two new parents to conferences here at the middle high school. Family Zoom forums to present school I Ready and MCAS data are scheduled for next week. Churchill Hill and the primary will be combined. On Tuesday, October twenty fourth at six P M. And the middle high school will be providing presentation on Thursday, the twentieth. That's its view. Principal will be sending out those Zoom links, then we go to the board and post the presentations. I would invite the members of the school committee to either attend. In real time, those those presentations or. When you have an opportunity, review the recording. Chocolate retreat. Has been rescheduled to Sunday, October twenty ninth. It will still run from twelve to three, and that will be in the upper parking lot at the middle high school. They were very accommodating. This event was originally scheduled for Saturday, the twenty eighth. But they worked with us so that we could do homecoming for us Saturday, the twenty eighth. So we are very grateful to be. One of our business associates for working with them that. And our next school maybe will be November first. At six thirty P M. And that will be hybrid Zoom. From town hall.
Thank you very much. Just a note on my part to echo. Dr. Burnham with wishing Mrs. McLean good luck in her path forward and. To say thank you so very much to Mr. Cassidy, and that we certainly will miss him and wishing him well in his new position. Next on the agenda, I have student representative. Do we have a student? I don't have the zoom in front of me.
I don't believe that we do.
Okay, well, then good thing all that, all that is homecoming was caught up. Thank you. Under new business, I would like a motion to table the contract ratification this evening.
So, second.
All those in favor? I oppose. Okay, we will hopefully have that. It will be on our agenda on November first. Next, we have donations. You can.
Having a microphone issue?
Multitasking.
This evening you have before you two. Donations. Both to the Turkey Hill Elementary School. One in the amount of two thousand one hundred seventy one dollars and twenty one cents. This is from the P T O. These are the proceeds from the Scholastic Book Fair, and these funds will be deposited in the gift account. And the funds will be earmarked for the library. And the second donation. In the amount of five thousand five hundred thirteen dollars and twenty seven cents. From the P T O for penny wars. And this money will be deposited into the gift account for Turkey Hill Elementary. And I would recommend acceptance.
Do we have a motion to accept these donations?
Motion to accept the donations with our thanks.
And a second? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, we thank them very much. That's wonderful. I can't imagine all the pennies.
Thank you to the P T O for that.
Thank you to the students and their families for coughing up the pennies.
That's right.
The many parents at Turkey Hill who have to dig through couches for change. I'm I'm out. I got no more change than.
There's nothing else. There you go. Next, for discussion, we have the assessment report.
You give me one moment. I'm going to. Alrighty, so this is just a slide deck. That. Sort of captures the highlights from the assessment report. The report is available on the website. So I want to thank our Director of Teaching and Learning, Mrs. Scott, for putting together that report for you. And again, the information here is also contained in the report. So we'll start with the I Ready Literacy Fall Benchmark Assessment. Forty-four percent of grade two students are already scoring on or above grade level. This assessment was administered in September. Fifty-four percent of grade three students are on or above grade level. And teachers are using this I Ready data to inform small groups and targeted interventions. In grade six through eight, over seventy percent of the students in these grades are falling either on or above grade level. Or potentially only one grade level below. And I want to remind everyone that it is typical. That we don't see large numbers of students performing on or above grade level at the very beginning of the year because they're being tested on this. Year's curriculum, which they have not yet been taught. So this speaks to the strength of the skills that they've acquired in the grade level prior. So areas for. Some concentration. We are going to continue to review student performance data down. To the level of the domain. And use that information to inform interventions. As a reminder, we are still supporting staff in the second year of implementation of into reading. That's our literacy curriculum K five. And again, the teachers worked over the summer. And we are making some adjustments to the tier one full class instruction. Following. The experience of year one implementation. It's important to note that differentiation is a priority. And enrichment and challenge activities provided for students. Anyone that's in that middle or above grade level will be looking to challenge. We will continue with targeted interventions or differentiated instruction for any of those students below grade level. And tier two and three interventions. Will certainly be required for any student that is two or more grades below. And just as a reminder, our multi-tiered system of supports, our M T S S staff. Include our classroom teachers and special educators. And tutors. With working with these students with their targeted interventions. We have some additional assessment tools that we're using. The Dibbles Assessment, again, that's a literacy assessment. It assesses basic early literacy skills. We'll be administering that assessment again this year in grades K through two. And it will be repeated. Two times later again this year. Kindergarten this year is using a formative assessment tool, so it's not a summative where, you know, they've. Gone through many modules, and now we're going to assess what was learned through all of it. It's more of a frequent, ongoing type of assessment. And this particular assessment is to track progress of reading skills for students. We're going to continue to progress monitor with. The. Curriculum module assessments as well. And we're looking to fine tune early literacy screening. Particularly when it comes to. Following the state guidelines around dyslexia. And lastly.
And lastly, our coaches are working with teachers on their planning for small group instruction and that at first during planning time. And our coaches are also beginning student-centered coaching cycles with the teachers. Again, this is all in literacy. And lastly, for literacy in grade six through eight. Here in our first year of implementation of the new Amplify E L A curriculum. Teachers are working on unpacking new units, diagonally and trying to dissect them and understand them. We're doing this work with the coaches and then also participating in professional development with the publisher. Again, the grade six to eight differentiation is a priority. And Amplify provides a level of differentiation for writing assignments right through the program. And again, students to a more grade levels below will be requiring tier of change and new dimensions for them. I Ready in the math. K five, over eighty percent of the students at each grade level in K two and over seventy percent of the students at each grade level in K five are on or above grade level. And some are one grade level below. And again, a reminder, this is typical. For our students, grade six through eight, over seventy percent of these students are on or above grade level or just one grade level below. And areas for concentration in math at the K five level, again, that's
That was me.
Okay.
Technology is wonderful.
Sorry about this one. Sorry, I was hiding it back on me.
As we did with literacy, we are continuing to review data on student performance down to the domain level. We're going to continue with our second year of implementation of Into Math and make adjustments as we did with literacy curriculum. We'll make adjustments to tier one instruction based on what we learned from the organization last year. Again, all the same differentiation is a priority around enrichment and challenge as well as support. Additional assessment tools are being used in math. We have some universal screeners for number sense. Those are being used for K to five to identify core gap skills. And that will help identify which M T S F lessons would be beneficial. And as we mentioned, kindergarten is using that formative assessment tool, which also can track progress of math skills. And again, even with math, our coaches are working with teachers during common planning and implementing data cycles. Areas for concentration at the sixth, eighth level. We will be evaluating and selecting and give high quality middle school math. There isn't much in this in the same process as the selection for the Amplify curriculum relation this year. Do you anticipate a recommendation on the curriculum adoption coming before you read it in spring? And again, at the sixth, eighth level, differentiation remains a priority. So now we'll move on to some highlights from our M C A S from last spring. The majority of areas have changed positively from 2022 and the part in 2019. Meeting and exceeding percentage has grown, partial and not meeting percentage has been reduced, which is what we're looking for. We are going to still be working hard to close gaps. Ninety-three percent of high school students in E L A and ninety-eight percent of high school students in math partially met expectations, met expectation or exceeded expectations. There were two E L A students and four math students that won't retake the M C A S test. Rated six math results for Univer are seventeen percent above the state average for meeting and exceeding expectations. And we made a seventeen percent increase in leaving and exceeding since just last year. Seventh grade math and the eighth grade E L A are ten percent above the state average for meeting and exceeding. Grade 10 math is ten percent above the state average for meeting and exceeding. Grade three math made a ten percent jump. Grade five E L A and a ten percent increase. Grade eight E L A made a fifteen percent increase. And again, that's compared to a year ago. I can tell you from my days working with an instructional data specialist who had been trained by the Achievement Network, often called A N E T, to see an increase of double digits, to see an increase of at least six percent or greater is a signal. Areas for concentration, we are going to continue to offer those essentials level classes in E L A math and biology at the high school. We're going to continue providing targeted intervention for students in order to increase the number of students and achieve at that meet or exceed expectation level in all content areas. High quality curriculum programs include assessments which closely mirror the types of questions and writing assignments that appear on the M C A S test. Therefore, more aligned with the ways in which the state is assessing what students know. Therefore, greater chance that they will perform. Grade 10 math decreased in the number of students exceeding by fifteen percent and that's a big loss. But we did see an increase in the number of students moving in that that was a big shift. Obviously, some of the last from exceeding fell into that new category. But there were also some shifts upward into that new category. Accountability data. The state provides an accountability percentile for every school in the state. It's based on M C A S scores in English, language arts, math and science in terms of the achievement scores. They factor in the student growth scores from E L A and math. There are annual student growth scores provided for science because those tests are not done in consecutive years. So you can't have a road measure there. At the high school level, high school completion is a factor. So they look at the number of students that graduate as they typically should in a four-year window. They look at the number that needed to have a fifth year in order to graduate. They also look at the dropout rate. They take a look at the percentage of our English language learners that are meeting annual targets in order to reach their English proficiency in a six-year window. They also take a look at chronic accentism. And that is the finest, the percentage of students missing ten percent or more of the days that they were enrolled in a given school. We think a lot of districts over the last few years have been struggling with this due to COVID absences from lockdown day as well as the mental health challenges that so many schools are seeing with our students. And lastly, and again, this is at the the high school level. This is a factor of the high school level, advanced coursework completion. So the percentage of eleventh and twelfth graders that complete advanced coursework such as advanced placement courses in national baccalaureate programs, part degree in the way, dual involvement courses and other windows course. So that said, where do you land? The accountability percentile for the high school based on the data from the spring in sixteen three. That's low compared to last year. Last year we were at seventy-one, although pre-COVID dating back to twenty eighteen, we were in the upper sixteen at that time. Ludenberg Middle School, accountability percentile seventy as compared to seventy-one last year. So relatively unchanged. And the really great news, Turkey Hill Elementary School, the accountability percentile is fifty-one compared to thirty-five last year. So that was a significant thing. And you can see that Ludenberg High School has been deemed as making moderate progress towards targets. But the middle and Turkey Hill have been meaning that substantial progress towards targets. And just to sneak peek at our advanced placement things. You can see that that we we're doing pretty well. We did see a little bit of a decrease in the overall performance in the number of students taking the biology test this year compared to last. However, I want to remind everyone that we had a new advanced placement biology teacher last year. So it was the first year going through the eighteen for that teacher. So we fully expect to see some rebound in these numbers. And lastly, one more reminder that we will get into a deeper dive of the assessment. You know, grade level and so on and so forth. When we do the family forums. At the family forums for the middle high school, I just want to mention that they will also address the Amplify curriculum that's being implemented first year this year. The parents will have an opportunity to ask questions about I Ready data for their students or
Challenge in in it coursework, I think it's important. K to twelve that there is differentiation in the instruction and I'm glad that's a priority. I also wanted to comment on the improvement in the student growth percentage. I thought that was impressive, particularly in the sixth grade math. But but overall, I thought it was well done. And also, I wanted to congratulate the teachers at Turkey Hill for pulling that number up so very much. In the accountability percentage from it was like thirty five or thirty three or something to fifty one. That's a huge jump in a year, so I wanted to congratulate the staff at Turkey Hill on that. So I think that's where we're at. And also thank our coaches and our director of teaching and learning for joining us tonight. We appreciate it. Thank you all.
Thank you for putting this together.
I'll be anxious to see the zooms and see what else comes out. You know, I love this stuff. That's that's my thing.
So how often the assessments are three times a year now they do the beginning of the year, the mid.
So we will come back with an assessment report in early February because we give a winter benchmark in January. Then we take a little bit of time to kind of dig into what the results are telling us. And then we have an end of year assessment, so we come back in June. And that's really where you get to see the the growth. And performance of kiddos for having been working on the grade level curriculum for the entire year. MCAS, however, is happily just one time a year we report on that. And same is true for the AP exams as well. That's one time a year.
Okay, let's move on then to old business, the third read of non discrimination policies. Since there is a truckload. And we do have to read them all tonight, I thought it was probably best if we like. Start with Laura and she can read one and then Peter reads one and and we just go down the line and we keep going until we're done. Because there's quite a few of them and I would also suggest that. We vote on them collectively at the end. If someone finds one of those needs further work, we'll pull it out. But I think we can probably assume that we can vote on them at the end. So if that's all right, let's get started. And I would just say to everyone, please just check you have a green light on your microphone before you start reading.
Yes, your policy, am I reading the entire thing or just the parts in red?
The entire.
Oh.
Not what's crossed off, but everything else.
A long one, a long one. Okay. Equal employment. Equal employment opportunity, non discrimination, or one zero six. The Lunenburg School Committee and Lunenburg Public Schools are committed to maintaining an education and work environment for all school community members. That is free from all forms of discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. There's two periods there. There's a title there. Yep. Okay. The members of the school community include the school committee, employees, administration, faculty, staff, students, volunteers in the schools and parties contracted to perform work for the Lunenburg Public Schools. The Lunenburg Public Schools does not discriminate in its programs, facilities, or employment or educational opportunities on the basis of race, color, religion, creed. National origin, ancestry, ethnicity, age, disability, marital status, sex, gender identity and expression. Sexual orientation, pregnancy and pregnancy related conditions. Genetic information, veteran status, natural and protective hairstyle, and any other characteristic or class of individuals. Protected from discrimination under state or federal law. Retaliatory conduct toward persons who have reported possible bias, discrimination, or inappropriate behavior who have assisted in an investigation. Or who have otherwise exercised their rights under this policy is also prohibited. Students and staff who violate these policies may be subject to discipline up to and including expulsion or dismissal. Non discrimination. Public schools have the responsibility to promote learning for all children and to overcome insofar as possible. Any barriers that prevent children from achieving their potential. The public school system will do its part. The district commits to the following. One promotes the rights and responsibilities of all individuals as set forth in the state and federal constitutions pertinent legislation and applicable judicial interpretations. Two, encourage positive learning experience. Experiences for children, youth, and adults, all of whom have differing personnel, personal. And family characteristics and who come from various socioeconomic racial and ethnic groups. Three, work towards a more integrated society and to enlist the support of individuals as well as groups and agencies, both private and governmental in such an effort. Four, use all appropriate communication and action techniques to air and reduce the grievances of individuals and groups. Five, carefully consider and all the decisions made within the school system, the potential benefits or adverse consequences that those decisions might have had on the human relations. Aspects of all segments of society. Six, initiate a process of reviewing policies and practices of the school system in order to achieve the greatest extent possible, the objectives of the statement. The Lunenburg Public Schools requires all members of the school community to conduct themselves in accordance with this policy. It shall be a violation of this policy for any member of the school community to engage in any form of discrimination, including harassment and retaliation. Or to violate any other civil right of any member of the school community. We recognize that discrimination can take a range of forms and can be targeted or unintentional. However, discrimination in any form, including harassment and retaliation, will not be tolerated. It shall also be a violation of this policy for any school community member to subject any other member of the school community to any form of retaliation. Including but not limited to coercion, intimidation, interference, punishment, discrimination, or harassment. For reporting or filing a complaint of discrimination, cooperating in an investigation. Eating or encouraging another member of the school community to report such conduct or file a complaint. Or opposing any act or practice reasonably believed to be prohibited by this policy. Do I need to leave read the legal references?
I see.
Okay. Okay.
All right. This is forty one oh six dot oh one, non discrimination on the basis of sex. School committee in accordance with Title Nine of the Education Amendments Act of nineteen.
Yeah, I think we may just have a copy paste issue on this one. Uh, we may need to exclude this.
Yeah, I think we have to exclude this until the um, the which works. Okay. So that's.
All right. All right, so we're excluding fifty two eighteen there.
Anti bullying and harassment policy student instruction five thousand, student conduct fifty four hundred, student harassment fifty four oh two. Is the policy of the little brick school, public schools, the district. That all of the students have an education work setting that is safe, secure, and free from harassment and bullying of any kind. The district will not tolerate harassment or bullying of any type. Conduct that constitutes harassment and bullying as defined here in it is prohibited. This policy applies to student behavior, but all student staff members, guests, and contractors are protected. Definitely, uh, one definitions A. Aggressor is a student or member of the school staff who engages in bullying. Set the bullying retaliation toward the student. Should be a B. Let's cross that. Harassment harassment means any threatening insulting or dehumanizing gesture, use of data or computer software. Or written verbal or physical conduct which is derogatory to a person. Is designed to mean intimidate or have the effect of substantially interfering with an individual's school or school slash work performance. Such such action may occur on the basis of. Race, color, religion, creed, national origin, ancestry, ethnicity, age, disability. Marital status, sex, gender identity and expression, sexual orientation, pregnancy, pregnancy related conditions. Genetic information, veteran status, natural and protective hairstyles, and any other characteristic or class of individuals protected from discrimination. Under state or federal law retaliatory conduct with persons who have reported possible bias discrimination or inappropriate behavior. Or who have assisted in an investigation or who have otherwise exercised the rights under this policies prohibited. Students and staff who violate these policies may be subject to discipline up to and including expulsion or dispossess. Such as C central harassment. Sexual harassment means unwelcome sexual advances. Requests for sexual favors and other inappropriate verbal, written, electronic, they transmitted. Or physical conduct of sexual nature, including but not limited to. Unwelcome comments, touching, written notes, pictures, cartoons, or other inappropriate conduct such as leering, whistling. Pushing up against the body and or commencing a commenting on sexual activity or body parts. Harassment had the effect of creating an intimidating hostile or offensive work or learning environment. It takes place under any of the following circumstances, one. With submission to such conduct as made explicitly or implicitly. A term of condition of employment, structure, or participation in school activities or programs, two, when submission to a rejection of. Conduct by an individual is used by the offender as a basis for making personal or academic decisions. That any individual is directed to advance essential answers question. Is that supposed to be personnel as opposed to personal? Making personnel decisions. Being so.
Maybe personnel probably would be.
Cause the parallel structure is you talk about employment and then students, so I think.
I would think it should be first person.
Yeah, I think that's a second. I just don't have to read again.
Catch when such conduct has the effort of unreasonably interfering with an individual's work attendance at school. Or participation in academic or curricular activities. Or or when such conduct has the effect of creating an intimidating hostile or offensive work or learning environment. D bullying bullying is defined as the repeated use by one or more students or members of a school staff. Of a written, verbal, or electronic expression or physical act or gesture. Or any combination thereof directed at a victim that one causes physical or emotional harm to the target or damage. To the target's property, two places the target in reasonable air of harm or damage to his or her property. Three creates a hostile environment at school for a target. Or infringes on the rights of the target at school, or five materially and substantially disrupts the education process. Or the orderly operation of school. Bullying includes direct behaviors like taunting, stealing, threatening, and unwanted physical conduct. Bullying also includes indirect behaviors like deliberate exclusion, lying about some and spreading rumors. Bullying is a form of harassment.
I'm gonna take back a couple pages point here, this is super long.
Right, okay, alright. Uh, cyberbullying, cyberbullying is defined as the use of the internet. Cell phones or other electronic devices to send posts or text messages. And or images and materials intended to hurt or embarrass another person. This may include but is not limited to continuing to send email to someone who said they know for they want no further contact with the center. Sending or posting threats, sexual remarks, or pejorative labels, and hate speech. Ganging up on targets by making them the subject of ridicule in online forums. And posting false statements of as fact intended to humiliate the target. Disclosure of personnel data, uh, personal data such as the target's real name, address. Or school on websites or forums posting as the identity of the target for the purpose of publishing. Material in their name that defames or ridicules them, sending threatening or harassing texts. Instant message and instant messages or emails to the target. Posting or sending rumors or gossip to instigate others to dislike and gang up on the target. Which is determined to have a material and substantial interference with school activities. Or the rights of the student and teacher of students and teachers. Cyberbullying shall also include the distribution by any electronic means. Of communication to more than one person or posting of material. On an electronic medium that may be accept accessed by one or more persons. If the distributor or posting creates any of the conditions enumerated in clauses. One through five inclusive of the definition of bullying, cyberbullying is a form of bullying. F hazing hazing is any conduct or method of initiation into which. Any student organization whether public or private property. Which will believe recklessly endangers the physical or mental health of any student. Or other persons such conduct shall include but is not limited to. Within being branding, forced galstenics exposure to the weather. Forced consumption of any food, liquor, beverages, drug, or other substance. A substance or any other verbal treatment or forced physical activity which is likely to adversely physical health. Or safety of any student or person or which subjects any student or person. To extreme mental stress including extended deprivation of basic necessities, i.e. food or sleep or food or extended isolation. J possible hostile environment as defined in master law section seventy one. Chapter thirty one, section three thirty seventy is a situation in which bullying causes the school environment to be permeated with. Intimidation, ridicule, or insult that is sufficiently severe or pervasive to alter the conditions of a student's education. H retaliation is any form of intimidation reprisal or harassment directed against the student who reports bullying. Provides information during an investigation of bullying or witnesses or has reliable information to stop bullying. I school staff includes but is not limited to educators, administrators, counseling. School nurses, cafeterias, custodians, bus drivers, athletic coaches, advisors. The extracurricular activities, support staff, or parent professionals. J target is a student against human harassment, sexual harassment, bullying, cyberbullying, or retaliation has been perpetrated. Two expectations. Every district student has the right to travel to and from school on buses. Participate in academic classes and vocational programs, walk the corridors and stairwells. Have lunch in the cafeteria, participate in sports clubs, activities, and school functions. Make friendships, express your individuality, and enjoy a sense of belonging. Leave past mistakes behind and achieve greater success and confidence. You have the right to do all of these things a safe. Free from harassment in in safe free from harassment, sexual harassment, bullying, intimidation, or humiliation. I think that's the sentence is very.
In safety, safety.
Oh, that's why does that make sense. Uh, certain students may be more vulnerable to becoming targets of bullying, harassment. Or teasing based on actual perceived characteristics including race, color, religion, ancestry, national origin, sex, socioeconomic status. Homelessness, academic status, gender, gender identity or expression, physical appearance, sensory or sensory disability. Or by association with the person who has or is perceived to have one or more of these characteristics. Each school in the district will create a safe supportive environment for vulnerable populations. In the school community and provide all students with skills, knowledge, and strategies to prevent or respond to bullying, harassment, or teasing. District employees and guests are solely entitled to a safe and secure environment where they are treated with civility and respect. Under vast general laws, under Massachusetts law harassment and bullying of any student or employee is prohibited. One on school grounds and property immediately adjacent to school grounds, two. At school sponsor or school related activities, functions, or programs whether on or off school grounds, three at a bus stop. Or on a school bus or other vehicle owned, leased, or used by the district. Uh, four through the use of technology or an electronic device owned, leased, or used by the school or by the district. Five at a location, activity, function, or program that is not school related or through the use of technology or an electronic device that is not owned. Or used by this the district if the harassment or bullying creates a hostile environment. At school for the target and infringes on the rights. Of the target at school or materially or substantially disrupts the education process or the orderly operation of school. Three consequences. Every complaint of harassment will result in investigation under circumstances and an interview with a friendly person. Harassing behavior will be stopped if a complaint is found to be deliberately false. There will be disciplinary consequences. If there is a pattern of deliberately false complaints living against the same individual, it may be deemed an act of bullying or harassment. Consequences and appropriate interventions for students who commit an active bullying or harassment will result in. But will not be limited to disciplinary consequences. That include counseling, lots of school privileges, detention, Saturday school suspension. Or expulsion and or notification of to of the police. Consequences and appropriate interventions for an employee founder. Committed an active bullying or harassment will be instituted in accordance with district policy procedures and agreements. Consequences and appropriate intervention for a visitor or volunteer founder have been founder have committed an active bullying or harassment. Shall be determined by the superintendent after consideration of the nature and circumstances of the act, including reports of appropriate law enforcement officials. Four. Reporting an act of bullying or harassment. A a billing principal is responsible for receiving oral and or written complaints. Alleging violations of this policy if a reported bullying incident involves the principal. Or assistant principal as the alleged aggressor, the superintendent or designate shall be responsible for investigating the report. And other steps necessary to implement the plan, including addressing the safety of the alleged target. If the superintendent is alleged, uh, the alleged aggressor, the school committee chair shall be responsible for investigating the report. And other steps necessary to implement the plan, including the address, including addressing the safety of the alleged target. All of players are be all employees are required and must report in writing any instances of bullying. Retaliation the staff member has witnessed or become aware of. To the principal or school official identified as responsible for receiving such reports or both. Better to report will result in actions or discipline up to and including termination of employment. C any other member of the school community with credible information that of an act of bullying or harassment. Has taken place is encouraged to file a report whether a target or a witness. D any student or parent guardian on a student's behalf who believes he she is the target of bullying harassment. Strongly encouraged to report and or discuss the incident with an adult, teacher, counseling. Counselor, nurse, or administrator. E complaints may be filed anonymously, however, no disciplinary action shall be taken against the student. Based solely on on the base solely on the basis of an anonymous report. F complaints should be filed as soon as possible after the alleged incident. Better to report incidents of harassment in timely manner may have an adverse impact on the abilities, the disposability to conduct any full investigation. Five investigation and resolution. Every complaint of harassment will result in an investigation of the circumstances. And an interview of the defending persons in situations involving students. Parents will be informed of the situation and invited to participate in resolution discussion. Two, better to participate in investigation into a resolution meeting will result in appropriate discipline, three. The principal or designate will make a determination based on all of the facts and circumstances. If after investigation bullying or harassment is substantiated. The principal or designate will take steps reasonably calculated to prevent reoccurrence and to ensure that the target is not restricted in participating in school. Or benefiting from school activities. Or referral to law enforcement will be considered based on circumstances. Five regardless of the outcome of bullying, determination, or any parent wishing, any parent wishing to file a claim. Or concern or seek assistance outside of the district, they do so. they do so with the Department of Edu- Elementary or Secondary Education Program Resolution System, P R S. That information can be found at HTTP colon forward slash forward slash WWW dot D O E dot mass dot E U forward slash P Q A emails can be sent to compliance at D O E dot mass dot E U or individuals can call seven eight one three three eight thirty-seven hundred. Part copies of this information will be available to superintendent's office. All attempts will be made to resolve the situation confidentially and as quickly as circumstances permitted, harassing behavior will be stopped. Six retaliation retaliation in any form against any person who has made or filed a complaint relating to harassment is forbidden. Individuals accused of harassment or involved in an investigation will be warned that there can be no discussion or need no discussion, I believe, of the incident and no retaliation against a student or employee who makes a complaint. If retaliation occurs, it could be considered grounds for dismissal of personnel and or removal for the education setting for student. A referral to law enforcement may be made. Seven confidentiality. To the extent possible, all reports of harassment will leak of confidential consistent with necessary investigation procedures and the goal of protecting the target and stopping the behavior. For further information about these guidelines or helpless sexual harassment problems or any other form of harassment, contact the opposite superintendent. If the principal or assistant principal is the alleged aggressor, the report is made to superintendent who is responsible for the investigation, the alleged aggressor, I I think we can delete that sort of instead. This is this last part of this. Cross references to your handbook.
There was an extra. Um um there was an extra comma. Somewhere up there we go. Under five investigation and resolution subsection. Where it says regardless of the outcome of the bullying, there's an extra, there's a comma after bullying and should be regardless of the outcome of the bullying determination. Chat, Tony, good job.
Students and instruction five thousand conduct fifty-four hundred dress code. Fifty-four twelve. Students should dress appropriately adding to a positive productive school environment. Student dress is unacceptable. If it is a distraction to the learning process, is considered to be offensive or that's the health, rights, and or safety of the person or others. Clothing, jewelry, or related apparel which refers to alcohol, drugs, tobacco, or candy, sexual connotations or suggestive double meaning will not be permitted. Chains worn on pants portraying studies from clothing for sharp objects on clothing or jewelry will not be permitted due to potential for damage, safety, and or injury. Students who do not adhere to the dress code will be dealt with in a disciplinary manner up to and including suspension. Additional information shall be provided in each school handbook. Lumberd Public Schools does not discriminate in its programs, facilities, employment, or educational opportunities on the basis of race, color, religion, creed, national origin, ancestry, ethnicity, age, disability, marital status, sex, gender identity, expression, sexual orientation, pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions, genetic information, veteran status, natural and protective hairstyles, and any other characteristic or class of individuals protected from discrimination under state or federal law. Retaliatory conduct towards persons who have reported possible bias, discrimination, and inappropriate behavior who have assisted in investigation or who have otherwise exercised their rights under this policy is also prohibited. Students and staff who violate these policies may be subject to discipline up to and including expulsion or dismissal. Little reference. Acts of twenty twenty-two, chapter one seventeen.
Students and instruction five thousand students, fifty-eight hundred, non-discrimination fifty-eight oh one. Non-discrimination, public schools have the responsibility to overcome in so far as possible, any barriers that prevent children from achieving their potential. The public school system will do its part. This commitment to the community is affirmed by the following statements that the school committee intends to. One, promote the rights and responsibilities of all individuals as set forth in the state and federal constitutions, pertinent legislation, and applicable judicial interpretations. Two, encourage positive experiences and human values for children, youth, and adults, all of whom have differing personal and family characteristics and come from various socio-economic racial and ethnic groups. Three, work toward a more integrated society and to enlist the support of individuals as well as groups and agencies, both private and governmental, in such an effort. Use all appropriate communication, number four. Use all appropriate communication and action techniques to air and reduce the grievances of individuals groups. Five, carefully consider in all the decisions made within the school system the potential benefits or adverse consequences that those decisions might have on the human relations aspects of all segments of society. Six, initiate a process of reviewing policies and practices of the school system in order to achieve the greatest extent to the greatest extent possible, the objectives of this statement. Committee's policy of non-discrimination will extend to students, staff, the general public, and individuals with whom it does business. No person shall be excluded from or discriminated against in admission to a public school of any town or in obtaining the advantages, privileges, and courses of study of such a public school on account of race, color, religion, creed, national origin, ancestry, ethnicity, age, disability, marital status, sex, gender identity and expression, sexual orientation, pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions, genetic information, veteran status, nat- natural and protective hairstyle, and by any other characteristic or class of individuals protected from discrimination under state or federal law. Retaliatory conduct toward persons who have reported possible bias, discrimination, or inappropriate behavior who have assisted in an investigation or who have otherwise exercised their rights under this policy is also prohibited. Students and staff who violate these policies may be subject to discipline up to and including expulsion or dismissal. If someone has a complaint or feels they have been discriminated against because of the aforementioned protected classes above, their complaint should be registered with the Title Nine Compliance Officer. Source M A S C.
Okay, um. Students and instruction is the students and instruction five thousand students fifty-eight hundred, anti-discrimination and affirmative action fifty-eight oh one, non-discrimination on the basis of sex fifty-eight oh one dot oh one. I think we have to have it in there because of the title nine, I'm sorry.
A direct copy of fifty-eight oh one dash oh one.
Yep.
But literally word for word.
So. Why is that?
So so isn't because this is following under anti-discrimination and affirmative action? Did the other one say that as well?
So this one is personnel, all employees, non-discrimin- non-discrimination, non-discrimination on the basis of sex. The other one was students. Ah, that's it. The exact same policy is applicable to employees as.
As students, yeah, so I think we have to. No, that's what I thought too, because I started like it was.
Clearly, I'm paying very close attention.
Nope, and I think we need this one from here for the title line, okay. So uh non-discrimination on the basis of sex fifty-eight oh one dot oh one. The school committee in accordance with the Title Nine of the Education Amendments of nineteen seventy-two declares that the school system does not and will not discriminate on the basis of sex and the educational programs and activities of the public schools. This policy will extend not only to students with regards to educational opportunities, but also to employees with regards to employment opportunities. The school committee will continue to ensure fair and equitable educational and employment opportunities without regard to sex to all of its students and employees. The committee will designate an individual to act as the school system's Title Nine Compliance Officer. All students and employees will be notified of the name and office address and telephone number of the compliance officer. The Lumberd Public Schools does not discriminate in its programs, facilities, or employment of or educational opportunities on the basis of race, color, religion, creed, national origin, ancestry, ethnicity, age, disability, marital status, sex, gender identity, and expression, sexual orientation, pregnancy and pregnancy-related conditions, genetic information, veteran status, natural and protective hairstyle, and any other characteristic or class of individuals protected from discrimination under state or federal law. Retaliatory conduct toward persons who have reported possible bias, discrimination, or inappropriate behavior who have assisted in in an investigation or who have otherwise exercised their rights under this policy is also prohibited. Students and staff who violate these policies may be subject to discipline up to and including expulsion or dismissal.
All right. I think we did it. Yeah, uh so what we're going to do then is going to take these as one group with the exception of um fifty-two eighteen because that section did not make sense when we went through it. So um I would need a motion and I would suggest that the motion include all of these numbers and just leave fifty-two eighteen out. And we'll have to look at picks for the next time. We will get little little typos.
Yep.
Little typos I have down and they'll be fixed. They didn't really change what we were doing.
Make a motion to approve policy. Forty-one oh six, forty-one oh six dot oh one, twenty-two oh two dot oh one, twenty-two oh two dot oh two, fifty-one oh three dot oh one, fifty-two oh one dot oh one, fifty-four oh two, fifty-four one two, fifteen oh one, fifteen oh one dot oh one.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so we will have to take a look at fifty-four um fifty-two eighteen and get that put back together the next time. Or the next time Policy Committee meets, whatever happens to happen first. Um so second lead policy sixty-two fourteen. Um Dr. Burnham, you had no comments from the public on the policy. Okay, so I would need a motion to waive the second read. Most of the way from second rate, you don't want to read anymore tonight?
Next in line.
Okay, uh and we had a second, so all those in favor of waiving the second read?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, so now we have a discussion about um the draft capital plan priorities. So. Um. I don't know the best way to do this. Um.
So I have a thought on this.
Oh, I'm glad you do because I don't.
So. Given the time of day that we're at right now, we've been at this for two and a half hours. Um. We do not have a scheduled appointment with the Capital Planning Committee still.
No.
And I will report later that the Capital Planning Committee will have a meeting next Monday to discuss criteria and scheduling that is on the twenty-third and our next meeting is on the first. Um I have some lingering questions about a couple of things on this relating to work that we kind of need to do preceding some of this, such as um exactly how we're going to approach the track and field when we have not done, we have not spent the initial assessment money that we got through Harper on the track and field. I just kind of can't get my head around how we present that at this point. Um. And and also I think there's a component here to the to the ADA engineering um on the uh on Turkey Hill that I believe we absolutely need to do. I I but I think relative to the conversation we had earlier this week with the with the Municipal Building Association, I just think I I personally need a couple of weeks to stew on this in terms of how this relates to prioritization.
Okay.
And I in that we under no obligation to prioritize this list, but we are typically asked. I I think that this can wait a couple of weeks if the other members are agreeing, I mean, I mean, I could jump into it, I just I'm not sure how productive we'll be tonight on this.
Yeah, I just I just question the method of jumping in when we jump in. You know, um whether we should each submit a list for the next meeting, let's say, have it for. To superintendent.
Just can't tell it's.
Right, and she can post it in the folder. But we just can't chit chat about it. Um I don't know if that would be helpful or if um can you think that more discussion needs to be had on some of this items in general?
You know, I think that surveying the committee to see where we stand relative to in in advance relative to prioritization would be instructive to a conversation that we would then have. And I I I think that would be a worthwhile exercise and I I I attempted to do that on my own today and kind of ran into questions that I I didn't I couldn't work through the logic on my own and and which is why if we were if it were an hour earlier, I think I would have the energy to to work through it tonight, but I just I I just don't feel like I have it.
Do we only prioritize our ask for fiscal year twenty-five? Yes, okay, yes, oh yes. And now after Turkey now. Uh so after Monday night's one meeting, I'm starting, I know I had pushed to put the um Turkey Hill things. We we put them out in uh thirty-one because I thought it should be enumerated. But it seems like um that may have been taken as evidence that we were planning on doing those things specifically in thirty-one.
Yeah, I mean, this is submitted at this point and it's we we discussed that Monday night, I think made the point relatively clear and I think we'll probably have to do that a hundred times over. But I don't.
I agree.
You know, I wouldn't change it because it's being misinterpreted. I think it is what it is.
Okay. I do, I still think it's important that they're they're enumerated and people are.
It has to be down here. It's no question that those numbers need to be there.
Okay. So we just basically, we would rank um our priorities and then. Okay. Yeah, and then if we um how much do we generally? It goes to the Capital Planning Committee, right? How much do they listen to us in our priorities?
I mean, it's different from year to year and I I've tracked from year to year, like, you know, percentages of what we get versus what we don't relative to other rather relative to other departments and that sort of thing. Last year, we we apparently had a good year. You know, there are few year, previous years were a little bit mediocre comparatively, but I I mean, I think that this public department gets a fair shake. It it's just, you know, I I'm not, as I said on Monday night, I personally don't have a lot of faith in the process, but I think that at the end of the day, it's the process that we have and the powers that be, the members of the Capital Planning Committee and the Finance Committee, I think, you know, gave it a fair look exactly at the processes it requires.
Right, I've sort of done capital funding too and I find that it makes sense to to listen to the experts, like for instance, like the police chief is telling me his priorities. Okay, that makes sense that that is his number one priority and we should probably follow that.
Yep.
So do we then wish to um table this discussion until our next meeting? And if so, can I have a motion to do so?
Make a motion to table discussion, capital planning, priorities until next meeting.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Maps super good. Has there been any um discussion about scheduling? Does that does that come up? Scheduling of. For capital planning, is that?
Alright. So next we have reports and. I'd like to begin with reports this evening. Okay.
So the finance committee that on October twelfth. They did uh review the articles and decided whether they wanted to defer or. Uh approve or not approve. Uh the ones for the school that that were more prominent. Uh was the A C article, the recognition article. And they decided to approve four one. Uh and the chair was also going to reach out to the superintendent as well. He would ask some questions. And also the uh roof. Uh for T C P that article about three hundred thousand dollar plan for. Dealing with the roof, that was also approved by the finance committee. Four one. It was.
There there was definite um conversation, but it didn't particularly change the school. Specifically with the ambulance and the two dump trucks that they funded through. But then they wanted to change the funding. It was a a great deal of discussion about that. And also, I'm just for. This could end up being something important for us. Um the police department presented um a mental health needs co response model. Um that they're going to do together with the Lancaster Police Department. And they have a clinician that they will hire forty hours a week. And will be used between the Lancaster. Um Police Department and the um Lumber Police Department. In hopes of keeping um people with mental health crisis or substance abuse crisis. Out of the criminal justice system and into healthcare thing to be which. Um doesn't really affect us. It could affect us a little bit, but I. I just thought that was my voice. So that's what I had, so.
I just one comment that I I want people to be aware of relative to the um article pertaining to the transfer. Of special purpose stabilization funds. For use of the purchase of the. The ambulance and the D P W trucks. Um there's a lot to that story that wasn't even discussed in the finance committee meeting quite likely. Um that dates back to. The purpose of the special purpose stabilization account, which has been misrepresented. In my opinion, over the course of the last few months. The net net however. Is that that fund. Is going to carry us. To buy very large pieces of equipment. Such as fire trucks and ambulances. Through the decade. So long as we continue to contribute about two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year for that fund. If we go and take out a million dollars, we've just set ourselves back four years. So. And or. That's a million dollars in capital expenditures that we're not going to spend on Turkey Hill or the Dragon Field or something else, right? So I understand the fact that there's a lot of good ideas and projects that the select board wants to invest in using our funds. But there's a lot to be said for the. This goal. Uh the the fiscal discipline. Of looking at the out years and the costs that. We are going to be taking on. Just with respect not only to vehicles which are extremely expensive. But also to the other capital plan. Deficits that we have, you know, if the the town manager reported last year that. You know, if you look at the ten year. Request for capital. And you look at the available funding that she's projecting. We're in the tens of millions of dollars of of deficit. And so, you know, why would you, why would you take a million dollars that's available for capital? And I I just I'm a logic. The logic is lost. I just wanted to leave it at that. Yes, they voted um to recommend disapproval three to two.
Anyone else with any um committee reports?
You mentioned the um. The building committee report. deeper into that one. I do want to uh say there will be an athletic advisory committee meeting on November twentieth. And a agenda we were coming on that. And we will hopefully have a guest speaker. On topics of fundraising and community building, so.
Um the master planning committee is meeting tomorrow evening at six P M. And the middle school council's next meeting is December fifth. Do you know where Master planning is meeting? Um at the town hall. So that is that story. And I'm not going to forget this time if there are any public comments. My proposals that are doing this. So I'm not sure why. So at least.
So. So I think, yeah, hopefully maybe somebody can pack or something.
See what we can figure out. It was. At the. Communities during. At the green communities meeting the other night, it was very difficult to hear. And so I apologize not that anybody can hear me for anybody who was trying to hear. Couldn't hear because I know how frustrating that was because that's what happened last night. So, okay. So now we're on to topics for future discussion. We need to put the um. Capital plan priorities. Back in the. Earlier. In the discussion somehow. And um we have to revisit the line item transfer and hopefully those contracts. And we have to have a third read of that policy. And a. Um third read of the policy we put off. And what else do we have the next time?
I would like to see an action on the articles related to schools. I think the. The T C P roof and the. Uh A C project that the school committee actually did action to vote.
I think we will need to have a discussion. Yeah, and just for everybody's benefit, I am probably not going to be able to. Was that right?
Alright, we'll talk about that then. Alright, so if we have that all taken care of, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Motion. Second.
All those in favor? At nine seventeen.